Welcome, everybody. I call this meeting to order. Today's date is March 20th, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been duly posted and a quorum present?
Yes.
That's a red one.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the recolher which stands on nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Town of Lee bylaws, and Town Meeting Time. I would like to remind everyone of a few procedures before we begin. All registered voters of the Town of Lee will have a right to speak and vote. Each person may debate once, and each debate will be limited to five minutes. After all members have spoken, a member may debate a second time. No one may debate more than twice per motion. Debate may be further limited or extended by a two-thirds vote. Members have to be a Lee resident to speak. Members have to be registered with a voter card and a clicker to vote. A person that is not a registered voter of the Town of Lee will require a majority vote of members to speak. When speaking, please state your full name, address, and please use the microphone so everyone can hear you. All debate must relate to the main motion and be directed through the moderator. Before making any motion or debate, you must be recognized by the moderator. Votes will take place by voice votes. If the moderator cannot determine the outcome or if a member calls for a division, remote clickers will be used. Clicker number will change to the blue when the vote is cast. The numbers will turn red for no and green for yes when the vote is closed. In the event of a technical difficulty, a standing vote will be called. Without objection, we will proceed. Tonight, we will be considering 13 articles. Article 1 is the LIA lease. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to lease public lands, namely for 4.95 plus or minus acres from a parcel known as 170 Greylock Street, shown in Exhibit A to the warrant, as a portion along Maple Street, and parts thereof which are declared to be surplus for a period of up to 99 years to the Lee Youth Association.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Debate? Any debate? Seeing none? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Were you here for the instructions? This is a voice vote night. We'll use the clickers for the backup. All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Motion passes. Article 2. Number 3, off Lander's Road, real property.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $52,400 for the purpose of acquiring by purchase the following parcel of real property for municipal purposes and described in a deed recorded at the Middle Berkshire Registry of Deeds, namely 17.8 acres of land known as 3 off Lander Road, Assessors Map 9 Lot 4, and to meet this appropriation, transfer from general stabilization the sum of $52,400 for said acquisition.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, Bob. Yes, Bob seconded. Do I have any debate? Hearing none. This is a two-thirds vote. Hearing none. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, do you declare that unanimously?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Article 3, 35 Tamarack Real Property. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate $200,000 for the purpose of acquiring by purchase the following parcels of real property for municipal purposes and described in a deed recorded in the Middle Berkshire Registry of Deeds, Book 5934, page 69, namely 27.2 acres of land known as 35 Tamarack Avenue, and to meet this appropriation, transfer from general stabilization the fund of $200,000 for said acquisition.
Second. Any debate? Hearing none?
You got one.
Oh, sorry.
John Davidson, 232 West Park Street. Not a debate, just a question.
You're gonna have to get close to that. Try it again.
John Davidson.
There you go. West Park Street. Not a debate, question. What does the town plan to do with this land?
Do we have Chris or Town Administrator or Member Gordon? Member Bailey? Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Well, a couple of things. We're currently using the property anyway with permission for our track team and cross-country, that kind of thing. And the opportunity came up to do this, which would allow us to actually have property that goes all the way from East Center Street all the way over to Maple Street, all one property, so that we could, in the future, have that for anything the town feels they need to do in the future. There are buildable sections of it. There's some conservation areas, and we just felt that to tie it all together was probably the best thing we could do for the town for the future. That's it.
So there are other possibilities for that land if the town does not purchase it?
It's very limited. There's a very limited area for construction. Most of it is very rocky and hilly on the side, and then there's a good wetland part of it. So it would be limited for future, like for housing or anything, that would be tough. In fact, at one time, we talked to the LIA about maybe even seeing if they were interested in buying the property, but it was going to be too difficult to be able to put anything else there. So the town felt it was best, let's get control of it for the future of the town.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously. Article 4. Affordable Housing Trust.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), establishing a trust to be known as the Lee Affordable Housing Trust Fund, whose purpose shall be to provide for the creation and preservation of affordable housing in Lee for the benefit of low and moderate income households. In implementation, the town will amend the code of Lee, Town of Lee, by adding the provisions printed in the warrant for tonight's special town meeting.
Second.
Second.
Member Renier seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Article 6. Zoning Administrator.
5.
Oh, I'm sorry. Article 5. Parks and Recreation bylaws. Recreation.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the proposed Parks and Recreation bylaws as printed in the warrant for tonight's special town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Article 6. Zoning Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 199-13.2-A, by adding underlying text as published in the warrant for tonight's special town meeting.
I'll second that.
Was that Member Bailey?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Please come to the mic.
What's that? Planning Board report? Yeah, I'm gonna need that. Need a planning board report.
Wrong one. Need a what?
All zoning changes need a planning board report. Does everyone hear me?
Peter or Buck?
So any zoning change proposal needs a report from the planning board. You know, what did you discuss? What are we doing? And what was the vote of the planning board?
Okay. Not, this is for the ZBA person?
Yeah.
This is, yeah, Article 6.
Yeah. Yeah. Buck Donovan, current Chair of the Lee Planning Board. This is administrative position would be done by, through the ZBA. The problem we have is whenever there's anything contentious or they need the ZBA to rule on anything, there's a real problem getting a quorum for the ZBA. So then people are held up, sometimes indefinitely, until they can get a quorum. This would be one person that would be appointed, and they would be able to field questions, give answers. If the person did not like that, they could still contest an appeal to the full ZBA. Is that accurate?
What was the planning board vote for this?
Planning board was unanimous to.
Thank you.
For this position.
Just in one other clarification to it, doesn't even have to be the applicant. Any member can appeal that administrator decision to the full ZBA board.
Come to the mic for discussion. Gail, you may need to see if that's on.
Yeah, it should be good now.
Testing.
It's on.
Hi, Gail Ceresia. So I just wanted to ask, there's a lot of...
I'm sorry, excuse me, Gail. Did you say your name and address and?
I did say Gail Ceresia, 161 West Park Street.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure. There's a lot of crossouts on this article, unless I'm looking at the wrong article. Am I?
We're on Article 6. Correct?
All right. So I thought it was all the same thing.
No, this is just for the zoning administrator position.
And this person is going to be in charge of anything that gets... They're just gonna be answering questions or they're making decisions? I'm sorry.
I think Mr. Donovan, I'll let him answer for you.
Thank you. I mean, I guess I got confused with this.
This would be a person that would field the appeals, that something that would normally go to the ZBA. This person would be able to make ruling on that instead of the ZBA.
For the matter of expediency?
Any, say, a variance, any dispute with the planning board, or any special permit that would be ruled on by the ZBA, this person would do that. ZBA is zoning board of appeals.
So we're eliminating the ZBA then?
No, we are not.
No?
No, the ZBA would still be there. This would be a person that would field appeals.
Okay, so they decide whether an appeal can go through or not?
They would give a decision on an appeal. If the person did not like that decision, they could still continue the appeal to the full ZBA board.
Okay, and this person is appointed by the Select Board or something?
By the ZBA.
By the ZBA.
Town Administrator, Breton, would you like to?
Yeah, so just two things to add to that. So first off, the ZBA has to decide what types of decisions they will allow the administrator to make, and they have to vote on that. And then, the, once, then the ZBA will appoint an administrator, could be one of their members, could be an employee. But the important thing to remember is that, once they make that decision, any member of the public can appeal to the full board. So we had a situation that had gone through Conservation Commission. It was a very small extension of a gravel parking lot, got held up for like two months to try to get a quorum. There was nobody contested it. There was no issues. On something like that, the administrator could make the decision. If the decision gets posted, if no one has any objections, it's done. But if anyone, even if you're not in a butter, it doesn't matter who you are, anybody can say, "I don't like that decision. I want it to go before the full board." So it helps, helps make it more efficient for non-controversial items.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion passes unanimously. Article 7. Reappropriate, appropriate 2019 and previous bridge capital.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to reappropriate the unused sum of $323,502 or any other amount from fiscal year 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019, the bridge capital and road paving capital, and DPW equipment capital for FY 2025 and FY 2026. Don't I have to say we transfer it to the?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Renier seconded. Any discussion?
Doesn't seem much.
Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion passes.
Okay.
Next motion, Article 8. Next article. Previous fiscal year invoices.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the following sums for the purpose, paying previous fiscal year's invoices to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds. Fiscal year 2021 and 2022, Fire EMS striker, $3,677.18. Fiscal year 2023 and 2024, DPW Van Zant, $2,550. Fiscal year 2024, DPW Otis Services, $95. Fiscal year 2024, DPW Ampstun, $250. Fiscal year 2023, DPW Ingersoll, $1,742. Fiscal year 2023, DPW Forsite, $1,174. Fiscal year 2024, DPW Joe's Diner, $96. Fiscal year 2024, DPW Heeman Williams, $1,591.39.
It's gonna be transferred from available funds.
I would...
Do I have to amend that? Just, the motion will be tran...
The motion is to transfer from available funds.
For that appropriation.
For the appropriation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Jones seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, next article is nine. Table of Dimensional Requirements. Mr. Donovan?
Mr. Blum.
They can motion first.
Sure. Yep.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 199-5.1, Dimensional Requirements, by adding the underlying text, removing strikeout text, and replacing the table of Dimensional Requirements as published in the warrant for tonight's special town meeting.
I'll second that. Member Bailey seconded. Any discussion?
Here we go. I just seem to be bringing it to a screeching halt here. I feel bad, but zoning's so fun. Little presentation I'd like to read first. There's a housing shortage in all of Massachusetts. In Lee, we don't have enough rentable entry-level apartments or affordable single-family or multifamily housing. Many people in town have told us the price of existing housing stock is terribly high and that their grown children cannot afford to return to Lee after finishing education. The town's master plan recognized this problem. It reported the typical price for a single-family house was $280,000 with monthly housing costs The plan directs the planning board to review the existing zoning for barriers to diversity of housing types. It also directs the board to consider ways to appropriately integrate new housing into existing neighborhoods. Lee zoning was enacted about 50 years ago. It has served the town well in many ways. Most of the town has been developed into single-family residents with a reasonable, vital downtown, but multifamily housing seems to have been disfavored and restricted. This proposal is designed to relax some of those restrictions. In doing this work, the board also discovered some parts of the bylaw that were confusing, difficult to administer, and self-contradictory, and so this proposal also makes some efforts for simplification. This proposal meets a real need in Lee for more diverse housing stock. It makes multifamily housing less forbidding and makes the existing bylaw clearer and less contradictory. We hope the town will support it.
Thank you.
Cornelia Calasur, Lee resident. I propose, I want to thank the planning board for all their work. A lot of work went into this. And I do agree that we need more housing for low-income. However, I worry as a whole for the Berkshires and partially it up more and more and more and less and less green, which people come to the Berkshires for. The second thing is I want to make an amendment to this, and I'll read it.
Please, please talk into the mic so everyone can hear you.
Sorry, apologize.
That's okay.
I move to amend the Article 9, Table of Dimensional Requirements, 199-5.1a, to include maximum building heights, which is missing and was in the previous table. That part was left out.
It's really not.
It's not, it's not missing.
In the table, there's, in the table, I looked at the original one, and there was a column for height of buildings.
It's table, not a new section. That's why it's not there. It got a little cumbersome to put all of that stuff in the table. It was in the text.
So it's in a different area of the proposed bylaw? Okay.
I'd like to see where.
Section 9.
Well, then, in section B9, I'm concerned because it's changing the height from the original to be now four stories instead of three stories. And we had a lot of...
It's three stories.
What?
Not an old story.
Well, I still feel like there should be in each zone. This is just saying certain.
So do you have a direct question for the planning board members to answer? Or do you have a different motion? Or do you want to withdraw that motion? Or do you want to look over again or, you know?
I tried to understand this very clearly. I met with Chris Breton, he was very helpful. Overall, I want to thank him also, give a shout out to him. But I think that it should be clear for people, if they're looking in section A, to have all the maximum heights in the different zones, not just in number 9, certain zones. And it's changing to include in that, in certain zones.
Do you have a direct question? Because we're kind of going all over the place, so let's hammer it down to...
Well, I guess people will probably vote against it, but I move to amend the Article 9 Table of Dimensional Requirements to include the maximum building heights, which is missing there.
Do we have a second on that motion? Who made that second? Can you, should we ask for identification? Can you come up to the mic and second that so we can all hear you?
No, I do second it. My name is Todd Sexton. Live on 6th Union Street.
Thank you.
We're talking about height. I worked in heights, and I won't go there right now, but the fact is, is that we're talking about expanding our emergency services that would have to deal with us, and simply put.
Okay. I think the motion is for, just to clarify, is you're making it so that the height is included in that chart only, not about a certain height, but just that it's included in this table?
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So, all right. So I don't know what... So we have, we do have a second on the floor to the amendment, so let's, go ahead. Do you want to talk about the amendment?
We have a question about the amendment.
The amendment about the height being located in the dimensional tables.
That explicitly...
That's the motion. The motion is, we need to, Cornelia, I believe, wants, made a motion to include the height in the table. I don't believe she's asking for a certain amount of height, just wants it located in the table. So. Mr. Donovan or Mr. Blum, can you?
Peter Blum, Orchard Street, Member of the Planning Board. We could do that, but we would have to have some text also in paragraph 9 remaining because you can't really fit in a table a sentence that says, for example, "Structures may extend to 50 feet and four stories or any greater height approved by the Special Permit Granting Authority." There just isn't room in the table to do that. But I wanted to address Cornelia's, what I think may be part of her objection. She mentioned that the heights are different, and indeed, they are different. We have, we have a table. The table shows 35 feet and two and a half stories in all zones where it's shown at all. This would, this text on paragraph 9 that would replace it would resume, would keep that, 35 feet or three stories, partly because we have advice that nobody who administers these things can figure out what two and a half stories are. And it's easier to know how to measure three stories. But we also are increasing the allowable height in this CBC, DCBC, the downtown, basically, the downtown districts, or the office park districts, to, what is it, 50 feet and four stories. This seems like this is something of a change, but we feel that it's, it's due, really, for a downtown area that's increasing in density. And in the I-zone, it says 50 feet and four stories, or to any greater height approved by a special permit granting authority. So there'd be a special permit review, and something higher than 50 feet could be allowed. For example, if they wanted to put in a water tower or something down in an industrial district, this special permit committee would review it. And that would likely be the zoning board of appeals, could be the planning board, depending on which zone it is. So I guess I'm against the amendment, but I didn't want to sit down without saying that indeed, we are changing and relaxing some of the height restrictions.
Okay. So this, is there any more discussion on this motion to amend? Yes, please.
Ken Berry, 27 Mallard Lane. I would love to hear a response to the gentleman's question who stood standing here, as to what the committee has done in terms of a study related to emergency services, if indeed you have four-story buildings instead of three-story buildings in town.
Okay. We'll get that, but that's not what the motion's on right now.
Correct.
So, let's stick to the motion to amend, which is, do we want to, Cornelia's motion was to locate the height of, that you have mentioned in D9, into the tables. That's all it is. Changing it from one page to another into a table. So if there's any discussion on that?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Member Bailey?
Thank you. Number one, I was, I participated and went to all these planning board meetings for all these articles, and we found so many mistakes in the two tables. Over time, a little piece was changed, but it didn't reflect right, you know? It was my suggestion that they go to three stories, because how do you measure a half story? There's no definition for it in our bylaws, so that creates a problem for the enforcement authorities. And as was mentioned by Planning Board Member Blum, if we try to put this in the table, this is what the problem was originally. We had heights in the table, but then there were like three... But then there were like three footnotes that you had to go look at to be able to understand what height you could have in your district and, or by special permit. So this just spells it out in text and I think it's much less confusing the way the planning board's suggesting we keep it. You just go to one place and there's all the zones and everything you can do and whether it's by special permit or not. Instead of trying to hunt down some asterisk somewhere to see which footnote number it is, that's the way it used to be in, in the two tables. So I just think this is so much cleaner and easier for applicants and residents, um, to keep it as text instead of trying to individually go to every district and write it in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Cornelius?
Just to be clear, I have the table right here, the previous one. It's, it's not hard to read. It's very simple and you can see residential, R30, building height, this is the previous one at two and-
Well, we don't, we don't want to go into all that because people can't, no, people can't-
I'm not going to read it all.
Okay, well-
Excuse me, I'm speaking. And it's, it's just very clear. There's no asterisks. It's very simple and you can read which district you're in and what's allowed.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I-
We don't have, we don't have a copy of that, so we can't go off of what you're looking at, so, um... Just an opinion on what's clear. No one else can see what you're looking at, so it's kind of hard to discuss that.
Okay, well, I put on the table and-
Yes, we've got a second. There's further discussion. Is there any, anybody that's new that wants to add to this discussion? No? Okay. So are we clear on what this motion, this vote is for? Do you want me to, is everyone good? It's, the amendment to this article is to vote to, in favor, to move the height into the dimensional table and out of D9. And if you oppose that, you leave it where it is in the, in the, uh, in the zoning wording. We're outside, we're going to go to vote? Yep, go to the microphone, Gail.
Gail Ceresio, 161 Park Street. I don't think she said to eliminate the text in 9. I think she just said to add it to the table.
Correct, you're right. I apologize for that. Yes. So we got to add the height to the table. That's what this vote is for. So, all those in favor of moving that to the dimensional table? Vote aye?
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, say no?
No.
The noes have it. The, the motion to amend fails. Okay, back to the original article. And I think we had some discussion from, um, I'm sorry, I forget. Ken, thank you, Ken, about the height and, and why we went higher.
Trying to go back a few years. We had a very contentious meeting about the height and we ended up, it's in the text, it's not in the table of DCBC, remember? Yep. And so, and the, the emergency services, they basically-
Mr. Donovan, just please talk into the microphone. They can't hear you.
Mr.?
Got to go right in.
Got to get in, yeah. Right there? Okay.
Put your lips on it.
Not a chance. Not a chance. So, um, emergency services told us, uh, there's a ladder in the next town and they have another one half hour away. And we'll see what else happens in town. Um, they were not concerned. I believe Chief is here if he wants to address it.
Maybe that's a good, uh... Chief Brown, do you want to say anything about the... He'll put his lips on the microphone.
That's it. The mustache will take care of the issue. Um, when I, when I was approached by Mr. Donovan, I think almost three years ago, we were talking about the change in the BCDC at town meeting to accommodate growth in the downtown area. Uh, we had a discussion about two and a half, three, four stories. We were standing in front of the auto parts store that is no longer on Frankie Consolata Way, formerly known as Eaton Street. And, uh, I pointed right behind me and said that there is a four-story building right there. Um, three-story, four-story, um, as far as firefighting, um, it's not going to pose a huge issue to the community. Since that time, we have increased our aerial ladder availability capacity. Uh, we do have an aerial ladder coming on the first line immediately. On the second line, we have an additional one. So the height isn't as much the issue. And from a public safety standpoint, the height actually works in our favor. When we're at three stories, um, we're under one set of circumstances. As soon as we go to the fourth story, enforcement, increased fire protection, alternate stairwells become something enforceable from my department and the building department that actually increases the safety in a building. So I, I don't think that, um, on the big picture, um, going higher is detrimental to the safety of our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks, Chief. Um, all right. Any, oh. This is your last time.
Thank you. Peter Blum again for, uh, I'll make sure it works. We have a very hodgepodge zoning bylaw that's been built up over the years. Uh, we have, in this case, in the case of height, we have the table. But we also have the so-called SGOD district, the special something-or-other district where the Eagle Mill is, which has its own separate height restriction that is higher than anything in the table. And then we, those of you who will remember probably with some pain, the town meeting where we said whatever the height restriction is in the SGOD district can also be in the two downtown districts. So I'm arguing here that this isn't as much of a change as it would appear just looking at the paper in front of you.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? The ayes have it. Motion passes unanimously.
One, one no.
To two-thirds. Yeah. Sorry about that. Uh, yeah. Is it, no, 10?
Did you declare two-thirds, Mr. Moderator?
I did not declare two-thirds.
Please do so.
I do, that motion passed with two-thirds vote.
I think it was one against, right?
Yeah, there was one against. Okay, next article. Article 10, zoning, multiple dwelling.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 199-9.2, multiple dwellings, by adding underlined text and removing strikeout text as published in the warrant for tonight's special town meeting.
Second.
Member Ranier, second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Although-
Gail Ceresio, 161 West Park Street. It seems like everybody here has already decided, but-
Can you talk into the mic, Gail, please? Can't hear you.
It seems like people already decided what they want, but I just don't understand why you're bypassing all the, um, requirements that we normally have before, you know, for, for a permit to do multiple buildings or whatever. Um, you're just crossing out loca, you know, plans and location and I'm, I'm just wondering why that's all being put to the wayside. Could you explain that to me?
Because it's redundant. Once you say that it requires a site plan and special permit, all that is covered in 13.3. So just putting this text is just adding pages.
So, so that is required somewhere else?
Oh, yeah, it's still there.
Okay.
There's no, no, we're not circumventing any of that process.
There, you're not circumventing the review.
I think Mr. Donovan said it's under 13 point-
13.3.
13.3.
Is yours, what? And .4 for special permits. 13.3 for site plan, okay?
That makes me feel a lot better, thank you.
Attorney Powell? Okay, while you're up there, Buck, or, or Mr. Blum, we, we do need a report on all these zoning articles. And, uh, Mr. Bailey just pointed out that we're probably going to have to reconsider Article 10 because we didn't do a report on that. For the-
Article 9?
Was it 9? I'm sorry, Article 9. Yeah, we're, we need to go back and get a report on that. But for now, do a report on this article and then we'll, we'll clean that up.
Okay. Article 10 was, a public hearing was held and the planning board voted unanimously to send to warrant.
Don't mean to question town council here, but didn't Mr. Donovan do a report on Article 9?
No.
We did not. Okay. Oh, got you, okay.
In a minute.
Okay. So, uh, any further discussion on Article 10? Okay, nice. Member Cornelius?
Cornelius. Thank you. Again, I want to thank everybody for all your work.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry to ask.
Can't hear?
Just so the people in the back can hear you. Thank you.
Um, I want to again thank the, the planning board for all their work. And I appreciate, oh, this is very clearly delineated. I do worry again for, for, um, you know, some of the districts that, um, it's really reducing, um, between dwellings, resident, residential areas, the sidelines from like, uh, oh gosh.
Setbacks.
Yep. Like, from 300, from 500 feet to 300 square feet. Um, you know, just to be aware of what we're voting on. I'm, I'm not against it, but I just want people to be, uh, it might have been in the previous one, but- For multiple dwelling, number seven, that's bedrooms. I apologize.
So do you, what, what would be your direct question?
I just, I just want people to be aware that all of these articles are making it so it will be much more condensed in the town of Lee. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, so just, um, anybody, anybody else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, motion passes. With two-thirds, sorry.
Mr. Moderator, I, I move that we reconsider Article 9.
Okay, do you have a second?
To receive the planning board report and, uh, and vote. I will second that.
Okay, we're gonna, so the motion is to reconsider Article 9 and vote. And Mr. Member Jones seconded. Mr. Donovan, will you do a report for us?
Yes, the planning board, um, had a public hearing and the planning board voted unanimously to send to warrant.
Okay, any discussion on, on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion passes. Is that two-thirds? I had two-thirds. Sorry, I had to turn the page. All right. Next article, Article 11. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend zoning bylaw, Chapter 199-3.1, adaptive reuse overlay district by adding underlined text and removing strikeout text as published in the warrant for tonight's special town meeting.
I'll second that. Member Bailey seconded. Any discussion? Report?
Report. Planning board held a public hearing and voted unanimously.
Thank you. Any discussion on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no? The motion passes unanimously. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator?
Oh, I didn't say, I thought you said unanimously, no. Okay. Two-thirds have passed by. Article 11. Go ahead, Mr. Member Jones, sorry.
That's all right. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 199-4.2, the list of permitted uses, by adding the underlined text and removing strikeout text as, as published in the warrant for tonight's special town meeting.
I'll second that. Member Bailey seconded. Report from Mr. Blum.
Planning board held a public hearing on this and voted unanimously to send this to the town in the warrant. Uh, I would just like to say about this, um, this looks like there's a lot of new stuff and a lot of stuff overstruck. Um, the things that are overstruck mainly substantively is the restriction that appears again and again and again in each zone that says the maximum number of dwelling units that is allowed on a single lot is four. And in the previous article, we just voted that it could be eight in most of the districts. So this is a cleanup article and I hope it's not controversial. The parts that are overstruck are language that seemed unnecessary to us or that was in conflict with something else.
Okay, any, uh, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, vote no?
No.
Motion passes with two-thirds vote. Next and last article.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend zoning bylaw, Chapter 199-10.6, smart growth overlay district by adding